In the state, Holden Borough probably being the closest match considering the free and reduced lunch population and then the cost per student. So that information is there for you. Our science kneecap scores, which our fourth graders take, and it's a little bit tricky because the smarter balance test happens in May and the kneecap test for fourth graders happens in May. It's a lot of testing. But we had 60% of our students proficient versus 48% for the state. That's not where we would like to be, but we are well ahead of the state. We are using more of the STEAM language in all of our content areas, including things like guidance, using the develop, explore, collaborate, you know, create a game that demonstrate, you know, that uses the adult regulation strategies, create a working with groups. So using that common language of exploration and creativity and developing things that are the focus of STEAM really puts all of those, gives the students more opportunities to use those principles. So I'll hope that translates to all areas.
Thank you, Julie. Any questions from the board on elementary school progress? Hearing none, we'll move on to middle, middle high school.
Thank you. I thought our scores were really good and then I looked at the fifth grade scores. I was talking about the science kneecap. The science kneecap, really interesting one. So those are four of the scores that I'd say we're slightly disappointed with them. And I say that, you might say we should be more disappointed with them. It's a really interesting test.
Excuse me, Mr. Twenty.
Well, no.
No, you're plenty loud enough. We just can't see what you're talking about. Do we have?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I have the copy of, I didn't have the kneecap. We'll get a copy. This is the smarter balance.
Sorry about that.
For eighth grade, the proficiency level for the state in science is 24 percent. And we're at 21 percent on that. So it's really low. And we've looked at, it's a really, across the state, we've talked about principals, and I think they're looking at potentially redoing the test. And sometimes you say you did poor on the test, so you redo it. But when we look at the numbers on the other tests, they just don't coordinate very well, as you'll see in a couple minutes while we go over the English and math scores. Similarly, at the high school, we were 12 percent above the state level on the science proficiency there, but the proficiency level for the state was 30 percent. And we were at 40, or I'm sorry, 31 percent, and we were 43 percent. The reason, you know, looking at that, as Mr. Holden spoke pretty well, that typically the scoring on tests that the whole nation takes or for the force nation takes, we're usually right at the bar. And so it's a really difficult test. So we again look at how the rest of the state does and try to compare how we're doing with the state pretty well. On the smarter balance, which we're taking by sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we'll talk about the SAT scores in the next meeting for more information, although we know we could put all that. One of the interesting things is our proficiency level in language arts is the exact same for every grade. I've never seen that. So it was 79 percent for each grade. When you look at the state of New Hampshire, sixth grade was 60 percent, seventh grade was 64 percent, and the eighth grade was 62 percent. So when you look at all our scores from the smarter balance test, which we took, we were at least 15 percentage points higher proficiency than the state average. And that's at least. Even more impressive, I think, was the math. The scores were almost identical to the language arts, which says, you know, which is nice. We have about the same people percentage. But the state averages in math are a lot lower. So in math, our grade six, 76 percent proficient, state average is 47 percent. So we had 29 percent more proficiency at the middle high school than in the sixth grade. Seventh grade, 79 percent, state average is 53 percent. So again, 26 percent higher. And then in the eighth grade, 82 percent of the students in Sunapee were proficient compared to the state average of 47 percent. So 35 percent more. So I'm really pleased with the smarter balance test. We will be working some with the science department, looking at the kneecap science. Like I said, there's a lot of years where they say they're not going to do the test anymore, that they're looking at potentially redoing that. So we will work with the science curriculum to look at that, but overall, very pleased with the smarter balance results.
Thank you, Sean. Any questions from the board?
Another comment.
Any comment?
Just again, really a great sign of the dedication of our teaching staff, of our community, and of our students to really take something like this seriously. But I think more importantly, I think our administration, our teachers is really driven through it. It's not just about this test. This is about an academic. This is about learning. So it's not preparing ourselves for one test, but preparing yourself for a lifetime of education. And when we see the consistency of these scores, that's what that tells us, the consistency. It's not, we're just looking to pass the exam. It's consistency year after year after year. We're above state standards. Our proficiency rates continue to excel. And so again, just kudos to the administration, the teachers, and our students and community for these wonderful results.
I would like to pay you back.
Please do.
I would like to pay you back on that comment and as a board member and recognize the administration and the teachers, of course, parents that are taken in the rigor of having the kids be prepared for these. But these test numbers are telling in terms of the proficiency of our schools. And these test numbers are used in many different comparative surveys, such as the U.S. World and News reports, the niche ratings that rank schools and are readily available to internet seekers, potentially seeking a school. And so these numbers, as much as people dislike standardized testing, and it's a chore for the administration and the teachers on the days that they take from most of the students, it is important to recognize that these test scores are, help to define some of the, say, as a very high quality school. And that's important because the high quality is not something only that we all enjoy, but potential school enrollees are also looking at those numbers.
Thank you. Hearing nothing further on our exceptional efforts by our students and staff. I'm going to move forward to our student representative. However, she's.
Jackie's not available today.
Jackie's unavailable to be here.
They have a big game tomorrow in McConia at 6:00. And they, I think, a team feed, and they had to practice over Colby Sawyer as well. Colby, excuse me, Proctor.
Proctor.
And they need some.
Moving forward on our agenda, we're going to go with the superintendent update.
Sure. I will be brief. Just wanted to touch on, we're going to talk about the community conversations piece a little bit. Had my second, third community forum last Wednesday. I guess it was last Wednesday. Had about 12 people show up. Had a great conversation regarding some things that were going on with the school district. Overall, again, really happy with things around schools right now. Had a great opening, first quarter kind of run of our belt. We're off and running. Excited about our sport teams. Fall play coming up next week, I believe, Thursday, Friday. You'll hear a little more about our focus group for strategic planning next Wednesday, Thursday. But things are in good shape and continuing to grow.
I think this is probably an appropriate place to talk about the question from the community regarding our board retreat. And I'm going to let you speak to it a little bit, and I'm going to add to it also.
Before we forget, we did forget Tara on the.
Oh.
Are we doing Good News as a whole, or?
We can, we can come back to you after we finish this, if you're, if you're patient. Thank you.
Well, we didn't do.
Nobody did their.
Oh, oh, oh.
We skipped the whole section.
See, this.
This is why you're new.
You know, that's good. It's not as easy as it looks. So where?
We must do updates.
Oh, great. We did testing, and that seemed like updates to me. So let's go back to the updates, and we'll go with Central Elementary School. Thank you. Good catch, April.
Thank you. So on October 6th and 7th, our staff worked with literacy expert, Dr. Mary Howard. She came and helped us with reading strategies and small group instruction for students. We had worked with Dr. Howard before my tenure, and it was time to kind of bring her in and reinvigorate the classroom teachers and teams focusing on differentiating for student needs. So that was great. She's going to be coming back to be more times throughout the year to work with us again. One of our fourth grade students organized a cereal drive during the month of October. And our Halloween parade on Monday included the entire school walking to the town hall and delivering the over 250 boxes of cereal that we collected. So thanks to all the families who donated. And we had a whole school field trip to the Hood Museum in Hanover a couple of weeks ago. Our teachers had some collaborative planning time, and so two of our art teachers organized two groups, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. They went out there for three hours. They did a guided tour of the arts, the public arts on the Dartmouth campus, and they went to the Hood downtown, which would be the enclosed location. Went to the downtown for an exhibit on fractal, fractal architecture. So that was really amazing.
Thank you, Julie.
I have a comment.
Yes.
I just want to say I participated on Monday, and I thought it was fantastic. I'd really like to see us continue with that moving forward. I think it was great. All the kids seemed very enthusiastic. We apologized to the food pantry for any smashed boxes as little hands were carrying them. But I think it was just really great to send the message of giving, and they really seemed to take it seriously.
Thank you. Sean?
Because we were able to speak about the testing, I'm trying to keep it brief, but as Ms. Holden said, we do have a fall play coming up next week. It's part of a senior project. We have, we just completed Mix It Up Day. So each year, it's a national Mix It Up Day where they come in the cafeteria and they're, I'd like to say encouraged, but they're really kind of required to sit in a different place than they normally do, to sit with different students. Some students think it's great. This was really good. I don't need to talk to them. And some students are like, like, and I said to my friends today, and they're very anxious to go back to next day. Overall, it was a very successful day. We'll have our Veterans Day breakfast next week, which is a great community event we do each year. And last week, I was able to meet along with Ms. Watkins with the Dartmouth program. I think we've spoken once about our students are going to have, starting in their second semester of junior year, the potential to take colleges, courses at Dartmouth College. So we've just started to roll that out with students, but we were able to meet at Dartmouth for the first time to go through that. There's certainly a number of requirements that need to be fulfilled, but it is another avenue for students to be able to access extended learning opportunities, which we're trying to provide. And real quickly, going to let Ms. Reed speak to our professional development day.
So our professional development day, we had individualized offerings for folks. They could sort of choose based on their needs. But then we offered one whole school opportunity, and we jointly coordinated a trip to visit some local businesses. So we went to Hike Center and Rookers and saw what went on behind the walls and had a chance to meet with folks and talk about what are the dispositions that they're looking for from our students, as well as skills, and look at the workforce and portions of the workforce that we're preparing our students for. And they were, both companies were fabulous about sharing what's working within their workspaces and sharing what they wish we would encourage and talk about and teach back in school. So we had a great day. And today, those of us that went came and shared back out with our faculty and had some great discussions about what we did.
Wonderful. Any comments from the board, questions, concerns? Wonderful. Thanks, guys. Well done. I think I'm back to where I started before, and that's.
Tara.
Tara. Good.
As you've all heard me talk about, we started a program here, several years ago, we started pursuing a program called the Score Life Field Program. Last year, we were, we got an interim license for the school year, and this year, DOE came out on Monday to review the program, meet with staff, meet with administration, Janet and Special Ed. Will be receiving final approval for that program. So will indefinitely be approved. Liz from the DOE complimented the system, the supports and the staff in the program. She was very pleased. And we talked about sharing with other people in the community, which was very exciting. Our final district profiles have been delivered. We were, we had a score of zero, which is actually the best score you can receive in your hundred. Which means we had 100% compliance for all of the state performance indicators for special education. I'm very pleased with my staff and the Janet staff and the administration. We're very fortunate we have the support. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you. All right, superintendent update.
Excellent.
Moving forward, moving forward, we're going to be having a first reading on policy, J I C H, drug and alcohol use by students. I sit on the policy committee, and I'm going to let Russ talk about this mandatory policy.
Sure. Not a big change to the policy. At least upon new RSA legislation that came out, the policy must include the second to last paragraph, students, parents, and guardians can request information or resources that exist for drug and alcohol counseling and treatment within the district or local area from the administration. So it's just kind of a, a little bit of a quirky thing, but saying if somebody came in and asked that, we don't necessarily have to have a program, but we should know kind of what's around us. And I think we've been working with Sullivan County, and we have plenty of literature, I think, at Gulf School now, as far as some programs that do exist.
Great.
That's the only change to the policy.
I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of policy, A I C.
I'll motion to accept the first reading of J I C H, drug and alcohol use by students.
And would anyone like to second April's motion, seconded by Brian? Any further discussion on this policy? Hearing none? All the questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to our next policy, these are second reading policies. We're going to, we have B E D, B E D R, access to public minute records. Should we do these individually, or should we just do this as a bulk?
The pleasure of the board.
Okay. Well, I'll let anybody who wants to entertain a motion either make a motion separately and/or make a motion collectively for second reading of B E D G R, access to public minutes. B E D H, public participation at school board meetings. E E A, which is student transportation services. E F, which is food services management. I H B A A, evaluation requirements for children with specific learning disabilities. I K F, high school graduation policy. K D, facility or services grievance procedure. And lastly, I H C A, summer activities. So this is a second reading in which we're moving these to policy.
So can I just motion to accept the second reading of all the things Paul just described?
Motion on the floor, is there a second on the floor for that motion?
I want to do it again.
Second, seconded by Brian. Any further discussion or any discussion on each of these or collectively?
So can we revisit B E D H, which would be public participation at board meetings? Because we've been around this one once or twice, haven't we not?
We're in a discussion phase now, so any, any further discussion? Would you like to add any comments to, to the policy as presented?
So just to recap, this policy allows the public to discuss anything they want regardless of whether it's on the agenda or not.
The policy, as Heather and I worked through it in our policy meeting, does have caveats. And those caveats are that they have to follow the other policies that we have, and excuse me for not knowing them off the top of my head, but discussion about personnel, students. Am I missing?
RSA 1, RSA 91 dash A colon 32 offer references policy K L and K D L, which your complaints regarding personnel.
Right. So that would preclude an honest citizen making a public comment from blurring out those statements. If they did, I wouldn't have any other recourse other than to call them out of order. And they could do that even if we had no mechanism for public comments on things non-agenda. Motion on the floor has been seconded. We're in discussion phase now. Anybody else like to add any other input into any of the second reading for the, for the policies?
I would like to add some commentary. So we, as Brian said, we've gone, we've looked at this policy from many different angles. And our current policy prior to the proposed revision as created and as discussed, one proposed revision as discussed in the policy committee meeting, our current policy is that the public is to speak on agenda items only. I'm sorry, the public is not, not able to speak right now. We have, we really have a situation where we've got, where we have had the public in prior years, in prior meetings, go off topic and go off the agenda items. And we've done that pretty substantially. And, and, but our policy as it stands, our current policy is that the public during those public comment sessions are speaking to agenda items only. And I know that amongst the public, based on some things that I've read and some things that I've heard, there seems to be some misunderstanding as to what our current policy is, what has been approved, and what we are to be operating by, which is understandable because the board has not held to that policy. So in looking at what has happened at board meetings in terms of the public speaking to agenda items, we, what my feelings are about this is that we should stay to our practice. And what are, not our policy, not our policy, but our practice. Our practice has evolved in such a way that we've been able to accommodate public comments on agenda items only. And so that is what my proposal is. And I know we had talked about that.
I'm sorry, Russ, I didn't hear you.
That is the current policy.
Yeah. So what you're suggesting is we stay with the current policy and continue to practice?
The board chair should be able to moderate comments on agenda items only as they are happening.
Okay.
I know that one comment that was made was that, and by you Paul, that you wanted some extemporaneous commentary.
Mm-hmm.
And we have had at past meetings extemporaneous commentary.
Oh, yes.
So I would like to continue in that way as per our policy with extemporaneous commentary as moderated by the board chair.
So I think if we're going to be making a modi, the policy that is currently in place was adopted directly from the School Board Association. And as we've done our research, we found that, that I don't think there's one school district out there that's adopted it as proposed by the School Board Association. And that particular policy states that we're limiting it to school board, I mean, agenda items only. So you're empowering the chair, for which I'm currently sitting, to change policy by allowing extemporaneous conversation off agenda?
Directly related to.
Directly related to the agenda.
So I think it, if I may, I think it'd also be the question, the timing, because currently you can discuss agenda items before we discuss them, and you don't know what's going to happen.
Mm-hmm.
Or after we discuss them, when we voted on them and the discussion's already gone. So I think there's a value to having the chair being able to recognize someone in the public to say, all right, we're discussing IT. And allow questions from the public on that item at that time. So that, because that additional information, additional insights is always beneficial when you're trying to make informed decision.
Yeah.
So I think that, I think that gives us some, gives us the opportunity for the public to have input, as well as ensure that the meeting stays focused on the agenda items.
Mm-hmm.
And your challenge as chair will be to.
Differentiate between what is allowed and what is not allowed.
And also ensure that the meeting continues to move along.
In a, in a pace.
Yes.
Yeah. Agreed.
So if we look at this current policy, I don't, the proposed one, I don't think meets.
Has proposed, and I'm going to go back to the beginning, we're going to have the agenda item only at the beginning. And then if we, if we, if we potentially add into the policy, having the public be able to comment as we are moving forward with our business. And that makes sense because people have asked for that before. And I know that I would like to hear from smarter people than me. I agree with that. In fact, it may make the first public comment portion somewhat moot. The Lebanon school district allows for public comment at the end, as well as during the entire school board meeting, at the discretion of the chair on issues that are being discussed. The question that we, that I'm having now is at the end where if the audience member has a question about something that's not on the agenda, then they have to come back at the next meeting after writing it and putting it in writing, handing it during the 29 days to get to the next meeting. And I'm going to make this statement and say that I want to be able to trust the audience, that they will adhere to the policies that we have, so that, so that you'll have an opportunity to speak on issues that are not related to the agenda, but you can't talk about personnel. You can't talk about your kid being held after school because she was chewing gum or whatever. We have to talk about things that are germane, not germane, but general in nature, not specific. And this is where we're at, guys. So we've got a motion on the floor to accept the first reading as a second reading. I mean, to accept the second reading as policy. We're in discussion phase. We've had some ideas in the form of ideas, not in the form of a modification to a motion. And we're at a point where we can have further discussion or we can call the vote. Does anybody have, anything else they want to add?
I would just want to say that I think we want to make sure it's a clear policy. And I'm sitting here staring at the policy, and I'm still not clear. So at this point, maybe push it back, and I hate to send policy review again, but I appreciated the first effort. I honestly think this is a great policy. It's very clear and specific so that people know what's expected of them. But I don't want to get into approving and changing and then have us find out when we come next time that it wasn't as clear as we thought.
Okay.
So I would suggest a little bit more, a little bit more time on the policy committee to make sure that it's all clear.
So it's your motion, it's your motion that's on the floor.
So I will adjust my motion to accept everything Paul said, except B E D H.
And we will table B E D H.
And, and send P E D H back to policy.
Okay.
Can I just, clarification?
Yes, please.
Pull out B E D H, I do a motion, pass that motion, and then I would make another motion to send B E D H back to policy.
Okay.
So I motion that we approve the second reading for B E D G dash R, E E A, E E F, food service management, I H B A A, I K F, K E D, and I H C A.
Could I ask you to add one more thing into that? Rescind your prior motion.
And I rescind my prior motion.
Okay. Okay. Having, having said all that, we all understand what we're, what we're going to second if we second it. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. I think we've had enough discussion. I'm ready to call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I motion that we move BEDH, public participation at board meetings, back to policy review to clarify and document what it is that's being proposed.
Okay. April's made a motion to throw BEDH back to the policy committee. Does she have a second on that motion? Heather has seconded the motion. Any discussion on that motion?
Will we, so when's the committee meeting the next time?
We try to meet monthly. So we'll be with it before the next meeting.
Good. Motion on the floor, seconded by Heather. We've had a discussion and I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Moving forward.
Final comment on policy. We had a request at the last meetings for the policy committee to look at JECB admission of tuition students. So we've taken that and we're still in the process of working that over. So there was some things we needed to do regarding tuition and payments and special education level fours and transportation and things, so we're really digging into that policy. It's growing and we'll be bringing that forward.
And I apologize to Jody, Sean, and Heather for brain cramping at the policy meeting that I missed, so we'll take it up at the next one. Moving forward, action items.
Can you pack it? Approved proposed girls varsity basketball trip and now I'm sure if you want to elaborate on this, but the trip they've done a few years now, at least in my tenure here to Connecticut and I believe their agenda and their itinerary is in the.
Yep. I motion to approve the proposed girls varsity basketball trip.
Motion on the floor by April, seconded by Brian. Any further discussion? All the vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. B, approved, proposed winter coaches. This is where we hire our staff to do, looking for right now, so I'm going to just read out who we have. I think we have a fall cleanup thing with Rob Messenger being bass fishing, so he's going to be rolled into the winter. Boys varsity basketball coach will be Tim Putschler. Boys JV coach will be Michael Belile. Boys middle school basketball will be Tom Frederick. Girls varsity, Tim Latour. JV basketball, Michael Kennedy. Middle school basketball, Jennifer Colby. And for those of you that don't have enough to do, there's winter spirit, so that's a vacancy, so if you know anybody, please inform them that we have a vacancy. Coed alpine skiing, Jaco Capino. Coed ski jumping, to be determined. Coed Nordic skiing, Miles Cooney. And finally, middle school coed alpine, Norm Dalton. Can I hear a motion to accept those as proposed?
I motion to accept those as proposed.
Second.
So a motion, a motion by April, seconded by Brian. Any further discussion? Call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving forward.
I'm going to remember to the ABC.
Oh, definitely. Okay.
I'm going to go to town ABC.
Because of the resignation of our chair, he was the, he was the committee member for the ABC. What's that stand for?
Advisory Budget Committee.
Budget Committee. Advisory Budget Committee. We need to nominate or appoint a board member to be that representative and I'll accept a nomination from anybody. Thank you. I've been nominated. Do I hear a second? April's?
I know.
We're all over that.
Yeah. Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay, perfect.
Paul, there's your next meeting.
Oh, wonderful. Is that AM or PM?
PM, I think. Yes, PM.
Motion on the floor, seconded by Brian. No further discussion. Any, any, any discussion? I'm not going to talk about it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. And I think that concludes our business portion of the meeting and we're going to move into the informational section, SCES Facility Committee update.
So we met last week, I don't know, things just seem to mesh together. We met a few days ago and myself, Matt, and Heather and Paul. We discussed moving forward after a meeting with Dan Visson and the, sort of reviewing the proposals that have been made back in 2003 through 2006 regarding the elementary school building. We said, well, we need to gather some information. What is it that we need to find out? And really what we need to find out is what this community's interest are. So we put together five quick questions. We got permission from Harry Gale and Jody and myself and maybe Matt will be outside of the polls, standing on the curb. Hopefully it'll be a warm day and we will have clipboards on our hands and if it's not raining, maybe iPads. And we're going to ask people coming out of the polls to take five quick questions in their yes, no, A, B, or C, just to give us a sort of a feel on where this community is with that building. And then from there, we'll bring that information forward and we'll have at least something to share with the board to discuss direction. I don't know if Jody or Matt or Heather or Brian want to add to that.
I'll just have a comment.
Surveys are going to be done by staff members.
There'll be Jody and myself and Matt.
Yeah. It's also just a good place for people to see our staff members.
Well, I just wanted to say I think it's a great idea that the three of you are there in case people have questions or want more information. I think you guys know what's best, you're the closest to it, so I think it's very important.
And in the newspaper, I think it goes out today in the inner town, there was a fact sheet and that sort of just gives some general information regarding educational specifications both for education and for our facility and some of the things we're lacking potentially maybe missing.
Okay. Any, any further comments on that? Hearing none, we're going to move on to the strategic planning update. Russ, you're the spearhead on that one.
On November 9th, the community will be meeting with a focus group for the community will be November 9th at 6:00 PM in the music room right here. And on November 10th, it's a parent meeting and that's parents of, parents of current students enrolled in the district, 6:00 PM here in the music room. Those are the focus groups for strategic planning. On the 9th and 10th, just for information, we'll have a student group, the fifth grade through eighth grade will go at one point. Another whole class will be offered for kids to go and then the high school, ninth through 12, and then we'll have a teacher one as well. And I believe the teacher one is on the 10th.
Elementary school's on the first.
Thank you. We split those up as well. Thank you, Jody. So just those focus groups are coming. Looking forward to the feedback. Again, those will be run by NZDECH, they'll be facilitated by them and they'll compile all that data and bring that back to us.
Any, any questions from the board regarding?
No, just maybe, do you want me to clarify again the strategic planning, why they did the focus groups? So I'm on the strategic planning committee and I noticed last week at the superintendent's forum, there's a lot of questions about why we're doing this and what the role is. It's not going to be similar to the surveys that they had done last year where it sort of covers all areas. The, the purpose of the strategic planning forum is to try and get everybody in the room to give the information sort of face to face and have a good dialogue. After that, we will talk about if we're going to do surveys or not, but we really want to encourage people to come to the meetings and have that, that dialogue in public. So just kind of from the rest of the strategic planning committee, that was really an important factor in making sure that we get sort of everybody in the same room having a conversation about it.
Strengths and challenges?
Yes.
Thank you, April. Community Conversation Update.